Back memory lane, Lord God. When we was in trouble, Lord, you always reached down and helped us. Lord, when Cottonwood sued us, Lord God, we joined hands, we agreed, Lord, and you made a way for us. Lord God, when we came up 2 million short, Lord God, you sent COVID money in, Lord God, and you helped discounting. Lord God, I want to thank you, Jesus. When we didn't know what to do, when we repaired the courthouse, Lord, you made a way for us. And Lord God, you see this other deficit that's looking at us, Lord, we still looking unto you because you are the way maker, Lord God. And Father, we going to have grace and we going to see your mercy and your hand reached down to us, Lord, in this situation. Now, Father, Lord, help this commissioner court right here, Lord, to be led by your spirit. Let us make wise decisions, Lord. And Father, Lord, you said it will acknowledge you in all our ways. You direct our path. So today, Lord God, help this court, Lord God, to get acknowledged you and seek counsel from you, Lord. And I give you the glory for these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Think of the collection at the end.
But ain't no grace.
Brother John, can you get the collection plate ready? Hey, y'all, they did ask us to keep it down a little bit because they got caught downstairs. But I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. I'd like to acknowledge all the guests that are here. I'm gonna open a public hearing. And it looks like we got Mr. Wade Boyett wanting to speak to the court.
Yes. I have a problem with county road 24, it's off of 2626 behind the solving. It's other court problems. Since they upgraded that mill out there last for 3 years, all the runoff of that mill is flooding that road going into my office. I know that if it was flooding my own property, then I could easily file, you know, file suit and make them stop it. But since it's county property, there's nothing I can do. But here just recently, we got like 3 to 4 inches of rain over, I'd say at least half a mile, three quarters of a mile. It's completely empty. It's becoming an issue for me. My mom's 75 years old. Unfortunately, I already know bad things can happen. What if I needed a first responder down there with a fire or, forbid, like what happened to my dad? Just asking the county to enforce the law. I mean, I can't see how a private company can flood a county road. It's costing the county money. Last time I did it, y'all came out, done a bunch of rock on the road. We greatly appreciate it. You've done what you can. But you're going to be continuing to do this over and over again. And why should y'all be spending county money to fix a problem that some, that this private company is causing? Basically, you know, I don't know where else to go with this, you know, because I said it's a county problem. But, you know, I need the county to enforce the law and make them stop this and put in, you know, they could easily put in a drainage ditch running. They already have one up in the front where it goes to the creek. Well, they diverted all this water to the back back there and it just goes down that road. They were making put in another ditch to go into the creek to solve the problem. Basically what I'm saying.
Thank you very much. And we are looking into the situation. We don't have anybody else set up to speak. I'm gonna close the public hearing. We're going to deliberate and consider action on the following item. Item number one, is certify the 2024 appraisal role for the Newton County Commissioners Court. And that was Melissa, but she has sent Tracy and Sherry over here unless it's six, so. Okay, and then we'll just one and two together certify the anticipated collection rate for tax year 2024. So we're just going to include both of those, item one and two.
Sent this one. Appraisal role was sufficient in Newton County Commissioners Court to stay at the state office. Melissa Burks, Newton County Tax Assistant Collector, who saw on the firm, the figures disclosed below proportion. They will be approved and certified 2024 appraisal role. This appraisal role was certified to me by Martin Herring, Chief Praiser, Newton County District President. The Schleswig tax of Newton County constitutes the values of appraisal role in Newton County. 2024 appraisal role information, county, total appraised value is $3,486,509,793. Total assessed value, 2 million, sorry, 2 billion, 57 million, 984,452 dollars. Total taxable value is 1 million, 78 million, 746,239 dollars. Total appraised value of new property, 10 billion, 812,877. I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. 10 billion, 812,877. Total taxable value of new property, 9,686,607. Level road, total appraised value is 3,486,509,793 dollars. Total assessed value is 2 billion, 57 million, 984,452 dollars. Total taxable value, 1 billion, 473 million, 781,406 K dollars. Total appraised value of new property, 10 million, 812,877 dollars. The total taxable value of new property, 9 million, 671,657 dollars.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, Judge. I thought that if the tone you forgot, you couldn't certify because she was still waiting on 30 something properties.
Well, she said she could certify, but she could not get the tax rate, figure the tax rate. So they got that with the 30 properties.
Those 30 properties would affect this appraisal?
Well, there was 30 on the page, but she said there's, there's not 30 properties being protested. So there was some glitch in the Harris government software that put them up, or what she said. How can we, how can we accept appraisal role information and not be able to calculate the rate? If something is holding up inaccurate for.
Holding this up is coming from the appraisal, just because what Melissa, Judge. So I don't know how this could be certified if there's any changes.
Yeah.
You know, just selling it out there because this is.
Well, she assured me that that number was going to be right. If this number's right, she ought to be able to give us a tax rate. And she's not wait, if this, if we certify this number as our, as our rate, as our value, what more is there? What was it last year, Tracy? Did you bring that information?
McDonald.
A market side on the appraisal list beside it shows 10 properties. That's in, instead of 30. So Melissa said it's not. The confidence that Morgan gave this was based on the 10, not the 30 that shows on the list.
So my question to you guys, is it going to change? 30 properties are not going to change anything. So therefore, we should be able to have the tax rate. So Melissa shows, oh, it's actually, it's all the numbers were based on. That's why the margin is 72. That's the reason Melissa says it's not going to change. Those numbers were right just to the page. She had to verify it with my mother. It's been margin verified at 72. Very accurate.
Well, I'm certainly not an expert on this, but Sherry's question or statement, whatever, which one it was, it's just so valid. It, you know, I mean, if we can't get a tax rate because we're waiting on more information.
How can we certify?
How can we certify the numbers? I mean, one of the two of them isn't accurate. We're not waiting on the appraisal office, or this number's not right. Or we don't have confidence that none of it's right.
Well, the 10 properties that are under protests, you know, that's what these numbers were figured on, the 10 properties. Are they even taxable property? I don't know.
So I don't know, because she told, Melissa's saying it's 30 properties.
But on the paper, it showed 30 properties under protest. Actually, there's only 10.
Shows them. So verify the number. Say basically, she didn't have bound up. She shows this. So Melissa's basically waiting on that last page to be sent. It shows 10, and that's why they go from numbers all the way to the 10. So the front page is the tax office.
They are taxable property. And they are figured into this number.
Does you do call Morgan?
I did not. So much going on, I didn't have the 10. She normally comes over. Not gonna call her. Can we call her and skip this judge and come back to it? Oh, that's just, do it next week? Are we on time? Are we out of time?
No, we're not out. We're.
It's so close. So we can do it next Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, no business. All right, well, we'll table this item till next Tuesday.
Take the motion that we table item one and two on the agenda till it's above information.
All right, motion made by Commissioner White. Second. Say goodbye, Commissioner Bomby. All in favor? All against? All right, item number three, that's already been through the court in March, so we can scratch that one off. We did a budget amendment transfer 2,000 from voter registration to the Vista software, and we voted on that in March. It just got added. Item number four, authorized to advertise request for proposals for Newton County precinct for, for the resurfing of approximately 4,500 feet of county road, 4181. So this is currently, the funds are in my budget, not asking for a budget amendment. I just need approval to go out for bids. I sent it to court. Being the way I have it written up is whoever bids it, there's three options. I'm just trying to get a feel for it. One is a quicksand, I mean, quicksand, a small sand quickset, a small sand quickset overlay. The second is an asphalt overlay, and then the third is a cold seal overlay. Just asking them to look at this road and give us a bid on all three or whichever one they choose to bid on. And then we get them in, we'll open them up, go from there. All right, we need a motion on that.
I like that one.
Motion made by Commissioner Benson.
A second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor?
I have.
All against? All right, item number five is review and approve the Newton County Historical Commission bylaws revised and adopted on July 25th, 2024 by Newton County Historical Commission. And basically what they did is they went in and updated the bylaws, the names, you know, the contact names and stuff on it. John, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Y'all receive yours by email?
Yes.
These are the revisions. It wasn't, wasn't contact information, though. It's like our bylaw information. The red shows what the changes were, and then this is what we adopted. I'm going to each have a copy of that. It's quite detailed and informative. You want to take one and pass it down? Uh huh, thank you.
It's the high level. What were the changes?
One thing, we secured the funds, how those are, that's one of the top things that came to my mind. So that there's not any further discrepancies of how funds are to be brought in. Like if a volunteer receives any donation, it immediately, first of all, if it's made out in check form, made out to NCHC, not that individual, we just clarified all those things that should be understood anyway. And that it's immediately brought in for deposit and it's immediately, immediately goes to the treasurer. Then we secured some things about membership and requirements about projects and things like that. Because we have several on the list that are very inactive, and so we'll be addressing that. So you're going to see our numbers go down, but we want to report truthful information, and a lot of ours are inactive.
Would you give the court the first chair, first and second secretary of treasurer, so they all know who's what position?
Yes, John is our chairman of the executive board. Ben Lindsey is our first vice president, and Francis Simmons is the second VP. Charles Wright is the treasurer, and I'm the secretary. And normally, as a county employee, I would service that, but we're getting more and more limited on our volunteers, so I'm serving.
Thanks. There were some questions about the Powell Hotel during the year. Does this take care of that, or is that something that we can separate?
It falls under historical commission, so it should take care of that.
It should, yes.
Do you look at the wording in this?
Only more time to look at that. I'd be glad to. Yeah, I'd like that, and I'd also like to.
No, they did explicitly for.
You go over that, Mr.? She helped us with a portion that we had a question about, but I don't know if she's had opportunity to look.
No, I haven't.
I didn't, I didn't get it, but can, can our auditor look at that in red?
Just send it to us, Sherry.
Before we bog on it, just here.
And I'll email it to all of them.
Thanks.
And you?
Yes.
Anybody else need to?
So do, we want to table this, so everybody gets a chance to look at it?
Especially her.
Against. So we'll table this until everyone gets a chance to review it?
We also got the K building, also the Powell Hotel, and anybody else with the floor.
John. All right, need a motion to table? Or I'll make a motion to table this until everyone gets a chance to review. Second. All in favor? All against? All right, item number six, approve contract renewal for phone services with Ring Central AT&amp;T. Chair, was you involved? I was out last week on listening. On the.
It said that if we don't get these in, that we're going to lose the whole rate that we worked out. And we're going to lose all that and go back to like 75.
And that's the same contract we signed with them last year?
First of myself, I don't like this. Don't serve it.
I second that. Oh, that wasn't a motion.
I will third it.
It's, it's.
Thank you. Thank you if you don't like it.
John.
Now's the time to do it.
What's your other option?
It's people that you.
Would we put her in the corner?
Yeah. Fan him out.
Thank you if you don't like it.
Are you in town, Gordon?
Uh, where's it going?
The other option we have is Windstream.
Nobody liked it, neither.
Huh?
Everywhere else but here, I think.
They just approved another $16 million grant from Newton County to, on a broadband side. We're still years away from anything.
Yeah, I'll say it'd be 10 more years.
So this is all of them?
I mean, it wasn't us.
I know. Yeah. But everybody looking at that word that that word is at.
Yeah.
That's why I had never seen it. I mean, it'll be out of date by the time we.
Oh, yeah, it will be. By the time they spend the money, we'll, we'll be long gone.
Yeah. Never seen.
So. What can I ask? I mean, why, what's the problem, Jamie, that you don't find about it?
Well, it don't show, it don't show on call ID who called. And then when you call from my office, you don't give my office number, it hits some.
It rang 347.
Then when you call, that number is going to say it's the courthouse.
So I talked to, you know, because I, I've gotten all the phone calls to my office.
Yeah.
And I was spinning in, and she's fixed it. But like, Mr. Powell called me yesterday, and it showed up his main number as the 3497151, which is the main county number.
That rang in.
That rang itself, yes.
But when did that start? Because it used to not do that.
When they switched over to 2626 started.
Yeah.
So.
But we were without a phone for 10 weeks.
I know I got to talk to her and get his number fixed to where it actually shows, where he dialed out, hit the office number. Because if he calls somebody and they call him back, they're going to call that main number back, and it'll ring.
Where?
It used to ring me, but I think they got fixed.
Rings my office now.
The judge will talk for his mom.
You know, there's a Michigan neighbor in county, Cheltenham program that when somebody calls his office, it logs every call, the date, the time, and when he calls them back, it sorts that callback with that. So literally, he can go in and somebody says, I called you, you never called me back. He can pull up a spreadsheet, I think you've seen it too, brother, and just say, here it is. Here's where you called me, and here's where I called you back on this date. I have no idea. At least I was in Danny's office.
It was scarred, you know, back then.
So she enters all of it while, I think the girl.
I know Ring Central, you can go on the website and you can see all your calls. There is a call log. We can all get interaction with this website. See all your calls. It'll show your call, contact information, the detail, which you have to do extra steps in order to find out who it was to call. And it shows me on my phone, I didn't see it. So here it was mess up, and that's something that we got to get a hold of.
Same time out, real call, it's not the office, not real.
Same way, same way, not.
3497151, it's the main number.
And they call it back. If you judge them, but not get who.
It's an orange chocolate. Show you the orange.
And that happens too, like a 45 straight road call, it'll show instead of who it's coming from.
That's why I don't like it.
That's why you don't like it.
Yeah.
And answer that question.
Yeah, brother.
Yeah, yeah, so we can be fixed.
They didn't fix, like fix, it's got all the system and changes.
Well, she was at the office a while back. Thank God. Apparently, she didn't fix it. Why would we have to figure out what needs to be fixed? They're the service provider. How would we have to do their job?
But then it comes to, it's. It's a lot back. Well, it's probably, it's personally, I don't know, it's usually, you know, how it can be simple. Once you guys run a company, we're in a company, which I'm guessing they're setting that up, like the company would point that one outgoing. I mean, that's not a, but when it's all our different departments, that's not the best, yeah, the best way to do it.
But I know. Oh, the tax office and the clerk's office has had trouble with.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is that.
Ours is one of them. They, it goes to, it's supposed to go to everybody's emails, and all of yours. They all owns on this one, and they, nobody else in office gets them. So if I was out today, if I was out today, I would be in the. They own this. This pretty much. I will. It's sharing. It has flowed to them. At least why I don't say this for the time of asking. The detail with, with Sherry is.
So we've got that settled. We really don't like Ring Central. But we didn't, we didn't like, we didn't like Windstream either.
In the last.
Well, see, the office at hand used the Ring Central.
Yes, and it's got that in the platform.
Same platform, but we were just playing opposite hand, and then we were playing Ring Central. So.
It can easily be fixed. They just got to go in and they can change it. And I walked around to every office in the courthouse and called from their phone, I dialed my cell phone, and to show it is either the direct number to their, to their phone, or it's that main number. And that's when I sent the email up, a lot of courthouse.
So what you say is send her email to come visit our office and fix our phone.
Yes, if you know the problem, you send her an email, and she should go into the system and fix it.
To be quite honest, I didn't know there was a problem. I didn't know that when I called a resident on my county phone, it's very disturbing to me that that is occurring. I mean, that shouldn't be. I mean, when the service provider, they, they should have enough professionalism and understand our business well enough to know that we don't want them going back to one phone in Newton County when we're spread all over the county being service provider.
I knew it was a thing.
Like I told Melissa.
We know, I know two things on the phone.
Do not disturb, hello?
Yeah.
She has the phone, y'all, to hear y'all from Sherry.
Yeah, I got to get that thing. All right. Sees the phone lady too.
Sure you got money. Watch it.
Oh, I got lost.
All right. All right, we need a motion to approve the contract renewal of phone services with Ring Central?
I'm not going to do that. Not going to do that. When does a contract expire?
Yes.
I don't sign it, then it's gone. Like, does it expire or something?
It goes, the rates go up. It's a yearly contract, Ring Central.
You know, I'm just sitting here thinking, I didn't know what Morgan just described, and it's just, it's frustrating. And then we were literally, I don't know if everybody knows this, but we were without phones for 2 weeks. Not a week. It was like a week. They switched ours over a week before they did the ones in Newton. We were like, not getting any calls. We could call out. We could call Newton, and we could receive a call from Newton, but we couldn't receive a call from a private residence.
Yeah.